Notice is hereby given that a board meeting, including executive session and work session of the Salem Kaiser School Board, District 24J of Marion County, Salem, Oregon, is called for 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 29th, at Student Services Center, 2575 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. For the record, all board members are present. The board will now go into executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations pursuant to ORS 192660 sub 2 sub D. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend executive sessions, except for those sessions held in regards to expulsions. All other audience members are excluded from executive sessions and are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the session as listed on the agenda. No recording of executive sessions is allowed without express permission from the board. Reconvening the meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is one agenda modification. There will be an item added at the end of six, so I guess it will be 6.5, and that would be the introduction of our newest communications person. So, public comment. We have some people signed up to address topic 5A. I will remind you, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute. When the red light comes on, you are done. If you see this, there may be something flying at you soon thereafter. First one, please come up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and then feel free to start. Tyler, you're on.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. My name is Tyler Skello-Lakeburg. I reside at 1515 Constitution Avenue in Woodburn, Oregon, and I'm here today to speak to you as a member of the bargaining team on behalf of the SKEA about the tentative agreement between our association and the district. Our team has spent over a year together preparing for and then bargaining with the district over the successor agreement. As in any negotiation, the process took countless hours of thoughtful time to arrive at an agreement that everyone agreed would provide our SKEA members and the district the language that will best serve our students. The teams had different ideas for addressing numerous issues that were raised at the bargaining table, but ultimately, we were able to come to this compromise through collaboration, deep questioning to understand the issues, and hard dialogue. I'd like to take some time to highlight some of the important issues that we collaborated on. First, the topic of pay. Every member of SKEA would have loved to realize a cost of living increase comparable to the raise that this board approved last fall for our superintendent. The reality is inadequate state funding would not allow for such a substantial raise. The other truth is that the COLA outlined in this agreement will keep Salem Kaiser competitive with other large districts. We will not be at the top, but we will not be at the bottom. Hopefully, it will at least keep us at a cost, with the cost of inflation, so that most of our veteran members do not move backwards. Insurance is another area of big concern. While the increases here are nice, the premium increases are so volatile in this industry that all we can do is to hope that the costs continue to be rein in. Here in Salem Kaiser, not all, excuse me, not in all districts, but in most, gone are the days of fully paid insurance. The two best components we have agreed to, to help the members with this problem, which is a national problem we recognize, are the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding for the Health Savings Account, HSA contribution, and the two-on-one option. For those that can, those two options significantly improve an otherwise difficult insurance landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Mark Atkinson.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and the members of the board, my name is Mark Atkinson, AKA Bargaining Beard, and I reside at 2262 Banywood Avenue, Northwest Salem, Oregon. I'm here to speak to you as a member of the bargaining team on behalf of the SKEA about the tentative agreement between our association and the district. There are two other positive financially related impacts for our members. The first is the change in the Early Retirement Incentive, or ERI, and the second is the elimination of curriculum rate. While we believe that both the district and our members would benefit from a greatly expanded ERI, we were unable to agree to changes other than the changing of the maximum age of eligibility. This change is a win-win, the type of contractual language that everyone is looking for. Veteran educators will no longer have to retire at 61 and figure out how to bridge the gap to Medicare or Social Security, or decide to continue working and lose this benefit. This will also retain these veteran educators, like myself, a few more years, enabling them to share their expertise and leadership with the less veteran counterparts. The elimination of the curriculum rate demonstrates that an educator's experience is valued regardless of the work they are doing well, also streamlining a payroll issue that has long been confusing and problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Amanda Broyles.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Amanda Broyles, and I live at 4808 Tate Avenue North in Kaiser, Oregon. I'm here today to speak to you as a member of the bargaining team on behalf of SKEA about the tentative agreement between our association and the district. Perhaps the change that demonstrated the best collaboration between the two teams was our work on revising the complaint section of the contract. This section has provided challenges and unintended consequences over the past eight years, most significantly putting numerous educators in an oppositional position to their supervisors and permanently impacting professional relationships. We worked on this section for a long time to understand the issue from both sides, and we have achieved what we hope will be a significantly improved system that will yield the right results and maintain professional relationships. Other significant agreements reached in the form of MOUs, we agreed to additional support time for early career, early career special educators, a significantly important benefit to help ensure their continued success. We worked to better define the required responsibilities of our special educators. We agreed to continue the protection of teacher time to focus on completing the grade, the progress grade reports at the elementary level. With the change in availability of grant funds for the mentor program, along with the restructuring of the positions to be instructional mentors, we dedicated dollars that would have gone to sabbaticals to supporting the success of these new positions and ultimately early career educators. In reading through the agreement, we hope the collaboration of support for educator and student success is apparent. This was a driving force for both teams. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy Merritt.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and the members of the board, my name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside at 2381 Teal Drive, Salem, Oregon. I'm here to speak to you today as the president of Salem Kaiser Education Association and also as the chair of our bargaining team. A challenge that Salem Kaiser has faced the last several years is a shortage of available qualified substitutes. This has significant impacts on student learning and teacher working conditions. In addition to focusing a significant amount of time on improving retention and supporting educators, particularly those just starting their careers, it was important for us to talk about procedures to follow when there is a shortage of available substitutes. We reached an agreement over this that will hopefully change the culture in some elementary buildings, while reinforcing the positive culture in many of the buildings. The idea of sharing the burden of covering a class that does not have a substitute among all licensed staff in the building took significant collaborative effort. We are hopeful that this component of the agreement will minimize the times when a classroom teacher is forced to take on an additional students, take on additional students from a class that didn't have a substitute. This practice was detrimental to the learning of numerous students throughout the past few years. At times, it might still be unavoidable, but hopefully, those times are fewer with this new agreement. The last MOU we agreed to is a critical, is critical to supporting middle school staff and students as they switch schedules to seven periods a day. SKEA members in the middle schools will hopefully be able to keep up with the additional work that comes with adding a class period. We are hopeful that this schedule will provide students the additional opportunities that the district says it will. We are committed to continued collaboration with the district around this topic to ensure that the schedule that any school operates on is in the best interest of the impacted student's success. The final component of this package, tentative agreement, is a collaborative agreement on staff safety. We have established a new commitment between the district and association to address the significant issues of staff safety, particularly regarding students. As this board heard from educators last school year about student behaviors and their impacts on staff, it is paramount that all district employees know that their safety is important to the district, know that there is a plan and procedure to address safety, any safety concerns that come up, know that there will be follow-through to support them if their safety is compromised, and know that this data will be used to help make schools a safer place for staff as well as students. We spent literally hundreds of hours working with this tentative agreement with the district to support our members and ultimately the students we serve with conditions that will promote the best learning environments possible. If we could have convinced the state to provide adequate funding, we could have accomplished even more. This agreement represents our best work, and we look forward to continued collaboration on numerous topics to arrive to at an even better teaching and learning conditions at our schools. Our membership has already voted and overwhelmingly agreed to ratify this agreement, and we hope that you, the school board, will ratify this agreement as well. As always, we look forward to collaboratively working with you.
Thank you. You're done. Thank you, Mindy. Okay. Rita? And Rita's here to speak to 5B.
Good evening. Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and distinguished members of the board. I am here speaking on behalf of our Association of Educational Support Professionals, and I do reside at 4384 Falcon View Way, Northeast Salem, 97305. And the Memorandum of Understanding between the district and Ask ESP for the insurance cap, I wanted to thank John Bates and Catherine Novy. We had long week after week sessions, very passionate discussions, and as my, our colleagues for SKIA said, that we all know that insurance is a real issue in our nation and here locally as well. And we know with not having adequate funding, it comes down to that. And we were able to come to memo an understanding that we signed so that our ESP members could benefit during this open enrollment time for that increase of $25. So I thank you. We look forward of collaboratively working in the spring, wherein we have to negotiate our full contract. So I'm sure there will be colorful and passionate discussion then, so I thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Rita. That's it for that list. All right. Moving on, we are now down to action items. Would anyone care to move action item A? Chuck?
I saw move that we approve the negotiated collective bargaining agreement between the Salem Kaiser School District and the SKEA.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second.
Jesse? Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Discussion? Chuck?
I, you know, I know this has been a long negotiation because I've seen Mr. Atkinson's beard for quite a while, and so I know that this is, there's been a lot of work put into this, but I just want to commend both the district and the bargaining team from SKEA. This is a very practicable, practical, practical and reasonable agreement, and I think that it's kind of a win-win situation, so I want to commend both the district and the SKEA for working together, collaborative, to make this happen, and I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Anyone else? Marty? Jim?
Although I'm very concerned about the last two years and what may happen in the future with money we may get from the legislature or not get, I'm going to vote yes because of the teacher shortage, and I do want to keep and retain the teachers that we have right now.
Jim?
So, I'm supportive of the agreement. I just have several concerns, one of which Marty just mentioned, which is it's a four-year agreement, and we don't know how much money we're going to have in 2019, 2021. And one of the things that I know Mindy and both Tyler mentioned in their testimony was collaboration. If the legislature does not give us the necessary revenue for that last year, I'm hopeful you'll collaborate with us at looking at a reopener on financials. I know it's not in the contract, but I don't want to lay off any more staff. I don't want to go through the RIF process in this contract. And I know you've already given, both of our employee groups, all of our employee groups have given each and every time we've asked, and that's very appreciated because it's really about what goes on in the classroom and making sure we have adequate resources for our staff and enough staff to provide an adequate education to our kids. And Mindy, I am cognizant of the fact, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom, but I am concerned about that revenue in those last two years. I know we'll work together to try to get the legislature to give us that revenue, but I also want to make sure that we understand, if it doesn't come to fruition and costs go to increase, I really don't want to have to go to that RIF provision. I really want to reopen this and take a look at how do we make this district operate going forward if the legislature and/or the taxpayers of the state of Oregon don't step up to the plate. I do appreciate the fact that you guys have given each and every time we've asked, and Tyler, yes, we'd like to give more, but in the financial situation, we find ourselves, even with an $8.2 billion state school fund appropriation, this is the best we're going to be able to do on a COLA and on the insurance. I do like the Memorandums of Understanding with regard to special education differential, school safety, substitute shortages, the HSA and the two-on-one contract. I appreciate that being part of this bargaining agreement. Those aren't things that are easy to do, and I appreciate your work on behalf of making sure that those occur. I also want to thank our staff, John, Mike, your whole team, Catherine, everybody that collaborated on this to make sure that this is an agreement that looks out for the kids because we, as a board, that's our first duty is to the children, and I think this does strike that balance. I'll be supporting the contract, just really worried about those last two years of a four-year agreement when we've had such instability in our state with regard to our revenue picture.
Okay. Anyone else wish to comment? Sharon?
So, just real quick, I also will be supporting this, and I appreciate all of the negotiation, and I think it's unfortunate that we are only able to provide a 2% cost of living increase, but I appreciate that, you know, we have agreed to increase that slightly. We realize that that doesn't cover all of the cost of living increases, but we really, really, really appreciate this bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Jesse?
I share a lot of the same concerns that Jim Green has about the last two years of the agreement, the 2019 through the 2021. Although, I mean, I'm happy to be able to say yes and support this bill, support the agreement, although I do share the same concerns, and I just hope you guys, if it came to that, that you'd be open and willing to have that conversation, just because we don't want to have to lay off more people. I would just, I would love to have, make sure you guys are open to that, although I am in support of, in support of the agreement.
Kathy?
I've thought about this agreement a great deal, and I'm very cognizant of the fact that not all of us were on board early enough to follow up the agreement as easily as others have. And I do have concerns. I think we have a very expensive insurance program going into this, and I would like to see us not have that. I realize that this is after the fact, and I apologize for that. I know, I appreciate your efforts. I know how hard bargaining is, and it seems at times to be deadlocked and then go on and on. I've been a part of that, but I do feel that we have to make every effort to bend the curve in the state of Oregon. And as a result, I know I do not have the votes to bend that curve right now, but I will be working on it. I want to send OE, OEB, a message that we aren't going to forever be able to stamp approval and go up and up and up in cost, and I will not be supporting this. It is not a personal issue that I have. I admire teachers. I've been a teacher. I know how hard you work, but the state of Oregon is starting to scare me. We aren't a wealthy state, and I very much want a bargaining, a bargain that does reflect the lack of income of so many families we have. And so, I know I will not win on this, and I know that I don't have the votes, but that does not mean I don't appreciate what Salem Kaiser does, what our teachers do, what our negotiators do, and what our administration has done. Thank you.
All right. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes six to one. Okay. 5B. We need a motion to...
Move adoption of the negotiated memorandum of understanding with our classified employees.
Okay. Is there a second? Sharon? Second, thank you. Discussion?
Just real quick.
Jim?
This is in line with what we just approved for our teachers, for our classified employees, and again, I want to thank Rita and our classified employees. Every time we asked, you stepped up to the plate and gave when we needed it. I understand health insurance costs are going up, and we just want to make sure that you're in line with what we did for our certified. So, thanks for your work, Rita. John, again, thanks for your work on this. I'm supportive of this MOU.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Yes? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay. Six to one. Okay. So that motion passes. Thank you. We will now move into our work session. The board will begin its work session, and the public is welcome to stay if they wish, or they certainly could quietly adjourn. So, I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. So...
Wait, wait. You want a five-minute break? Are you requesting a five-minute break?
Yes, sir.
One board member is asking for a five-minute break, so we will take a five-minute break, and then we will start. So, hopefully, the TV people got that, so... I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board. All members are still present. I would now turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. This is step one of the introduction to the supplemental budget process. I wanted to give you a heads-up of where we were headed with our recommendations for the supplemental budget process. You will actually take action on something that doesn't look like this at all. It'll just be all numbers, but I wanted to give you the story behind what we'll be recommending. And this is not in any specific order, because if I was going to start with an order, I would just start with the reserve FTE positions, which are three-quarters the way down the page, because we are really trying to monitor that class size, which is in every, this is normal for this time of year, and usually, there's a little bit more in the reserve FTE, and that was part of our cut, so we didn't cut as many actual classroom positions last year. So, we put some money back in there because we've already, as of today, added, taken two of our allocated to, for middle school, so we're really trying to watch the numbers. The numbers actually are coming in strong in some places, really crazy in others, and then under in others, so it's just all over the map. Also, one of the challenges, though, is that with the addition of any positions, we still today have 60 unfilled positions. We think that will be a lot lower by Thursday. We're making offers like almost around the clock out of HR. They're telling us not to worry. We're still worrying. So, and the other complicating factor is, for example, we have some really high kinder classrooms at a couple schools that do not have any space to add an additional classroom. So, we're adding some classified time in those cases where we really have no space to add another classroom. So, those are the competing demands around addition of positions, but we wanted to fully put that class size at the front of any supplemental budget, and we'll monitor those. So then, if you start at the top, we have talked a lot about the suspension and expulsion data, and when you look at our drug and alcohol discipline data from last year, 550 drug and alcohol discipline incidences about use and not about distribution, and we think that full-time drug and alcohol counselors could really help with that prevention. That actually starts at the middle school. The second is around ELD, English Language Development, and we have five positions. I can tell you, this would be a hard one to implement this year, but we want to put the positions into the budget, so if we can find the right teachers in the right schools that could implement with a specialist to provide that ELD instruction, to take that out of our classroom teachers, there's more specific training, we'll begin to do that. You have some data around why that's important. The thing we heard loud and clear at the Budget Committee was around science, so we're adding one elementary specialist position. Again, understanding we've got to fill, and if it comes from a classroom, it's got to fill the classroom with a good teacher as well. And we're really looking at STEM, not just science. We really want it focused on science, technology, engineering, and math. The next one is secondary, and it's not captured quite correctly on here. We were working a little fast today. Our intent with some additional dollars in STEM for six through 12 is to let our highly effective teachers do some work in teams with some extra duty pay. They've got some, we've got some great leaders out there that are leading our STEM work. They've also got some projects they're wanting to implement, so this would be a combination of extra duty pay and some curriculum for them or materials, and we think that honors some really talented work that's happening in six through 12 science. I already went through the reserve position, reserve positions. The next item is around attendance and chronic absenteeism. We have got to figure out what our strategy is for chronic absenteeism. If you look at the data at the bottom, we have 18% of our elementary students, 20% of our middle students, and 32% of our students in grade nine through 12 are chronically absent. There's some districts that have adopted some work in this area, and so we want a placeholder for that, to think about, what do we do about attendance this year? We don't know if it's a position. There's some companies that really help you work with that and offer strategies, so we're keeping a, putting money in for that. The next place is our elementary schools, just a really high need of trauma coming into our buildings and families in crisis and trauma. So, we're looking at either in the social worker or some mental health or additional actual school counselors. We're starting with three to begin trying out, what does that mean? We do have our partners from our agencies that are at the table with us having this conversation. Next, we have alternative education materials. In last year's budget, we had about $400,000. This year, we were reduced to $100,000. That would be adding an additional $100,000 back into supporting students that need different types of materials in order to access their education. Next comes in PE equipment and some equipment for middle school athletics. We're seeing some disparities among our elementary schools in that some elementary schools have parent clubs that will boost up the PE equipment. We've really got to get a base of similar equipment so it's equitable across all of our schools. We also are putting in some middle school music instruments, choir robes, and when we added back two middle school athletics a couple years ago, we haven't fully boosted up our equipment, so that $400,000 would represent an investment in middle school, extracurricular, and we know those are the type of things that keep kids engaged in school. We also put $100,000 in for science curriculum at the elementary. That's not a full curriculum adoption, but it would really help us to take a look to see what is out there for science, and we know that we, there's some places we could boost with some kits that would provide some more engaging and accessible resources for our teachers. Next one is around response to intervention. Our middle Our middle, this was supported in our middle schools in the budget process, and as middle schools have started this work, there's been a request for more. So this will really look at tiered academic supports for all of our middle schools. Next, we're looking at an additional translator to support our students on IEPs and their IEPs in their native language. We could use another additional Spanish translator. The last two things, when we did the reorganization, we found some technical things we missed in the initial budget process. We were going to come forward with a supplemental budget around this 326 before the legislature added the 8.2. So this would have come to you anyway. This is some misses and missing positions when we went to that automated system. And then last is that transfer of 4.5 million to work on the, to begin doing that work towards the capital construction bond. And the proposal we'll be bringing forward is the addition of about 8 million. The difference between 8.1 and 8.2 was 10 and a half. We know that about 5 and a half should go to that second biennium. There's some other drivers in the budget that will make this a workable and financially stable proposal for us. You'll see a mix of teaching positions and materials, one-time expenditure-type things, which is usually my strategy with any addition. And again, on any of the FTE, it's really about being able to find the right people for the right places. So for example, if we don't have drug and alcohol counselors that can really do some level of treatment with kids, and we can't find those, it doesn't do any good to put money towards a strategy that you can't find the right people for. So this will come forward to you next month. I'm open to you asking questions. I'm also open to you marinating on that a little bit and coming forward with questions over the coming weeks to me, and I'll be happy to spend any amount of time with you on that.
Any initial questions from the superintendent? Jim?
Just a couple, if you don't mind. On the first page, next to the last, the attendance strategy support. Hopefully you'll analyze that data and break it down by ethnicity.
Yep.
Or ethnic groups, as well as poverty. The other thing I'd like to know is, even though they're chronically absent, are they academically behind? Because that would tell us whether we're actually challenging those students or they're just bored. I have a feeling that's a small number, but I know that's a number, so hopefully when you look at that data, we'll break that down by ethnicity, poverty, and also look at whether they are academically behind or not. On the PE equipment MS athletics, just one comment there. Where it says in that last paragraph, "Some elementary school parent clubs have supplemented PE equipment purchases, others have not." So the idea there is to equal out those?
The idea is to figure out, what is the base level that every PE teach, every PE program should have? So there will be schools that get more resources than others. I won't tell you, all schools will get something, and I won't tell you, all schools won't get something. We just need to do an analysis of it.
We just don't want to also create a disincentive for our parents to help out with programs or projects like that?
No.
And the final one, just more of a comment than anything else, and you and I have had this discussion multiple times, Superintendent Perry, I don't see the addition of middle or high school counselors. And that has been an ongoing concern of mine, especially at the middle school level. If we lose them at the middle school level, then we've lost them at the high school level. I know these are all trade-offs between what we get and what we've got to do for the upcoming school year, but I just want to keep that in the back of your mind. You and I have had this conversation multiple times, increasing counselors at both the middle school and high school levels.
And we talked some about that and determined, when we looked at the drug and alcohol discipline data, that we needed to invest in that drug and alcohol counselors. So this doesn't do it across the board, but it does put some counseling back into the proposal. I know different than what you see out there with their, with their caseloads, because they're high.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Chuck?
Could you, I'm just looking at this 32% of our students in grades 12, nine to 12 are chronically absent. That's like one out of three kids. Could you define again for us what a chronically absent kid is?
Yeah. Chronically absent is less than 90% of the time they come to school.
Okay. Chuck, anything else?
No.
Any other questions for Sharon?
Just real quick. So the two that, the social workers and the drug and alcohol counselors, it's only three, where are they placed? Since they're not in the schools, are they at the district?
We would, the bottom would actually be placed in elementary schools. And we would determine if this sort of resource can help assist those very complex and high-needs elementary schools. Might be shared between two. The drug and alcohol counselors, we'd actually look at our discipline data, and they would have to do some schoolwork, and they'd have to do some treatment work with kids in school. So it wouldn't be district positions, but out into schools.
Sharon? Jesse, Lynn, Kathy?
My question is for the, the drug and alcohol counselors, as well as the social workers and mental health staff. The number it came out with is 117,831 per staff. Is that, is that just the cost of the employee plus their salary, or what is the, how did we come across that number?
Say the, say the first part of your number again. I heard it incorrectly.
Oh, it was a...
You came up with 101?
Well, yeah, when you just divide it by three. It's 117,831.
The cost of the salary, the cost of pers, the cost of health insurance are all rolled into that salary cost.
Okay. Anything else? Kathy?
So I want to thank you. I'm sure you'll all be pleased that I'm not wishing to cut each one of these, but I think you've done an absolutely wonderful job on dividing that money and those resources. And I'm very much in, in favor of, of addressing the drug and alcohol problem and the chronic absenteeism. They're tied together in their own way, and I very much support this.
Okay. Anyone else? Marty?
No, I'm going to marinate on it for a while.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item, which would be the bond proposal, next steps. Is that Mike?
That is, Mr. Wolf is going to come up with the next...
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Wolf. And do we already have handouts? So you're coming through.
Yeah, they're coming your way.
I think we do. Oh, sorry. Mr. Wolf, the handouts are coming.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Superintendent Chair Kylo and members of the board. This is a follow-on conversation from a few Saturdays ago, where we had a work session, and we talked about the overall major areas of work for the bond in preparation for a 2019 construction season. And so you have two handouts. One looks very, the one that's up on the screen, looks very familiar to the handout that we went over from a format standpoint, and I'll go over that in just a second. But you also have a companion document that has more detail about each month. The two go together, and I'll ask you to sort of bounce back and forth, and hopefully that's not too confusing. But I wanted to give you kind of an outline of the decisions for the board between now and when we have to meet certain deadlines, like the final bond proposal, the final number, and when we have to, when you as a board have to approve, deliberate and approve on the actual language of the bond title, so that we can submit all of those in March, so that we can stay on track for the, the May election. And so what I wanted to do is let you know that there's, if you look at the, the Word document, the sort of vertical document, starting in August, we're having, this is the overall, the general overview of the ongoing bond development process. And so we have three areas that we're still working on that will bring you information, and you'll see where that plugs in month by month, that will help you deliberate on what's in and what's not in with the bond, the final number. And one of those areas is seismic work, and one of those areas is we're assessing our special education needs, primarily at the high school level, because that's where we're building new additions at the high schools. So we want to make sure that we're building them for the future, and also supports the district strategic initiatives with respect to the improvements in our special education program over the, the near future and into the, the future 10, 15 years out. Because when, when we build these structures, they're not just for tomorrow, they're for the future as well, way out into the future, 10 or 15 years, maybe 20 in some cases. And so we'll bring you those, the information as we continue to develop it. We also have schematic designs, high-level conceptual designs for each of the sites that are listed for additions at the elementary level, the middle, and the high. And so we will have site-specific conversations. These aren't the master planning conversations. These are going out with the concepts and meeting with principals and the staff that they determine would be important to be in those meetings. And what we're, what we're bringing is essentially months and months of technical work. There's been a lot of site visits by the technical team, but now it's time to take those concepts and put them in front of the principal and his or her staff that, that they feel are important enough at this point. And really what we're bringing them is, could be anything from 85 to 95% solution, and then making sure that there aren't any fatal flaws in, in the conceptual designs at this point. We don't believe there are, but there may be, and, and we need to have that input from the site to be able to bring any of those changes or recommendations to you. So those are the three major areas that we'll be working on over the next several months in bringing you either through the regular board meeting, as you can see how the topics roll to the regular board meeting, or the work session, or the special meetings. And the reason that we structured it this way is because we know every month, we have a regular business meeting. We may have work sessions before that or after that. We may have the regular business meeting and a separate work session at a different date. We may have special meetings, because there are decisions that need to be made, but only after you're informed enough to make those. So in any given month, we can stack any of these meetings so that it meets your needs to be able to make the decisions that you need to make on this timeline. So that's the underpinnings of the, the document, the structure of it, and I'll go through it briefly and answer any questions that you might have. So as I mentioned before, in September, we'll be bringing you the, another process timeline update and give you more information around where we are specifically with the bond. Because remember, you've approved us to begin the work on the RFP for architectural engineering work and other work as well. So we'll keep you updated. So whenever you see a, a program update, process timeline update, we'll give you the latest, greatest update as to what our activities have been. And then if you look in October, and we'll give you a program update to include ongoing activities at your regular board meeting, and that will be an update on the architectural and engineering activities, land acquisition, that's another area that, that we'll be moving in as well, staffing, and finance and legal concerns, the capacity analysis, and also the overall community engagement, community awareness program. We also think that we'll need to begin moving in that area sooner than October, so we may actually provide you a general overview of the community engagement process in September in, in the general overview that we'll, we'll provide you then. And then if we move to further down in October, that's when we'll bring you in a work session the special needs assessment. So you'll bring, that'll be one of the three components. We will already be working on the site-specific feedback, so if there's anything that we need to update you on with respect to that, we'll weave that into the, the work session as well. In November is when we'll bring the seismic assessment to you. Now, what I wanted to show you was, in red, bold font here, these are decision points for you. So one of the questions was that, that everyone has is, when will the board be engaged in making changes to the base bond proposal? It, it actually starts, according to this timeline, in November. That's, you can have this deliberation anytime you want, but as far as the schedule goes, after we bring you the information from the site-specific visits, the special education needs, and the seismic assessment update, we feel that that's given you the information that you would need at that moment in time, which would be November, to begin deliberation on changes that you see as necessary to the base bond package. And that's important, because in December, to stay on track, what we'll be presenting for you is staff recommendations, first reading for the final bond package. We'll also be discussing changes to the bond title as well. So what we're trying to do is introduce the topic that you need to make a decision on, but also the next topic that you'll need to make a decision on in the next month or two. So the first thing that has to happen is the final decision on the total package. And at the same time that's happening, we need to begin deliberations on the language for the bond title, so that we finalize the package and then finalize the bond title language and the ballot language. And that leads us to February, where what we're projecting is that you'll take action on the bond title. So final bond package, action in January, the final bond title and ballot measure in February. And that gives us, again, the opportunity to make sure, because everything needs to be filed in March, in mid-March. So this is the timeline that begins the process for the final input to the board, and then the deliberation on the total bond package and the bond title. And then after that, you'll notice in March, we'll provide you an update on the design program, which will have been several months underway for the 19 construction season. In April, we'll provide you an update on the financing plan, because in May, we'll have the, the first reading of the authorizing resolution for the, the financing package. We'll also have in May, a discussion on the feeder system and the changes that we believe would be necessary to support the 2200 model, as we've discussed. And then in June would be the, the action on the final authorizing resolution for the financing package. We'd also talk about the, the boundary change process and timeline that we would need to begin in July. So we would begin the boundary change outreach and process in July. We wanted to get you up to date and receive any direction from you on that in June. And also in July is when we would, assuming that it's a very successful ballot measure in May, we would begin the conversations of what you would like to see in a citizens bond oversight committee. The citizens bond oversight committee is a similar structure to what we had for the 2008 bond and is pretty much a standard feature for all school districts after they pass a bond. So that was kind of a rapid overview for you, but the point that I'd like to reemphasize is that there are several moments in time scheduled for the board, for you all, to have full deliberation on any changes or modifications to what we have presented to you as the base bond proposal.
Any questions for Mike? Any questions? Sharon?
Thank you. This is, this is really, really helpful, the timeline. The one question I have, for October, you, you have community engagement, so that's kind of a full push during the month of October. How long does that extend? Because some of the information that you're providing us updates on don't come until later. So like the seismic update information, the feeder system analysis doesn't come until after the vote?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'm confused on when the public gets to provide feedback and comment on some of those key pieces.
Sure. So in September, we'll be providing you, as part of the program update, the overview of the community outreach and engagement process that we're talking about. And then we do have October and November as two months where we'll be, we'll have, whatever the structure is based on the, the strategy or the engagement process, could be feeder system meetings. It, it's an opportunity for us, and as a district, we've done this before, it's an opportunity for us to get out and talk about where we are currently and what the overall process is. And then obviously, members of the public have every opportunity to attend these meetings in any public session or any work session as well. And so this isn't the only input that, that we would expect the public to provide their feedback on, but we're at, we're at a point where... feedback on, but we're at, we're at a point where every decision that the board makes is in a public setting. And so we have the work sessions that lead into the first readings, that could lead into another work session, that could lead into a special meeting, that could lead into the action item the next month or the month after that. So that's really, I think, one of the primary input mechanisms for the public is these meetings, the public sessions as well.
Okay. Jim?
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate the work on this. And I want to make sure I'm clear, I'm very supportive of this bond measure. It may have been interpreted that I wasn't when we met a couple of Saturdays ago. I know we need these for our facilities and for our kids and for our district. My concern still is the community engagement. We're going to see a plan. Our new employee is going to put that together for us and wow us at our September board meeting with regard to that. The one thing I want to make sure that's part of that, and I know it will be, is the re-engagement of the group that brought this forward to us. And I can't remember the name of the group right now. The Facility...
Facilities Task Force.
Facilities Task Force. Make sure that those folks and the co-chairs of that group are involved in this. And the one thing I'd still want to make sure that we're aligned with our community with is that we pared this back, we've changed some of the things that came from that task force, that everybody understands and that they're supportive of it, because it's a big campaign, it's a big ask for this community, but it's something we definitely need in our school district. So I'll be looking forward to that community engagement plan in September.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. With that, thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
And I believe, we have one other item. We have an introduction of Lillian, who I understand has been involved in some criminal activity on her way out here.
No, don't say it like that.
She can explain it. She's in communications, right?
Right.
Isn't that her job? Okay. You want to stand up and say hello for a couple of minutes and explain your criminal activity?
So I'm going to do a quick introduction of Lillian on her behalf, and then if you want to add anything. Lillian comes to us as an experienced school communications director. She has been the communications director in a large school district in Guilford County in Georgia, and is, there's not much she hasn't already seen in the school communications world on the emergency side of things, in addition to the public outreach aside. She went from there to the city of Atlanta and was a communications director for their water department, and she decided that kids was way more fun than talking about water and sewer. So she wanted to come back to school districts. And so she has driven and moved across the country to be with us. And I think, I think it was in part because we had some really good recruitment efforts, and she fell in love with the Willamette Valley in our school district. And what I heard her saying to principals today was, her goal is five to one, positive to negative communication. She's going to make sure that we really beef up that communication strategy of our positive messaging within our community. So I know she's already right on top of that. There, did I miss anything?
I can sit down now.
Other than, I'm intrigued about the criminal activity here.
I know. First of all, hello, I'm Lillian, and it's great to be here. Like the superintendent said, I was in Guilford County Schools in North Carolina for six years, which is a district of about 77,000 students. And then I went down to DeKalb County in Georgia, which is 99,000 students. And it's amazing how many fires they like to set. And so I, I'm excited to be out of sewage and back into the public education spectrum. And, and it's a real privilege to be here and to be working with a board and an organization that has such a clear vision, which is really what drew me to it. And then I learned about the beautiful scenery, so it's a win-win for me. And as, as the chairman alluded to, as I was driving into Oregon, my very first taste of, and I've been overwhelmed with this story, but as I was driving in, I witnessed this crazy accident involving a trooper in the, in the DOWs. Did I say that right?
The DOWs, you got it.
In the DOWs, and some person slammed into a state trooper, and I was the eyewitness, calling the cops, guiding them into a roadblock on I-84, just as I had driven in on my fifth day of 2,400 miles from Atlanta, Georgia. So it was very exciting. I'm expecting lots of things just like that as we move forward, lots of excitement and police chases.
You should get some more calls from the...
That don't involve any of our students. That don't involve any of our students, but I'm very excited to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
I have it, too.
And the chamber sign-up is somewhere, and that should be, go back to Alice before we leave.
Right here.
Okay? And with that, we are adjourned, and we will see you on the 12th of September.